All right, I am going to call to order the continued city council meeting of November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, although today is November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Would you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Brown.
Here.
Perfect timing. Such a dramatic intro. Here, Champlin.
Present.
Councilor Fennessey.
Present.
Councilor Foot.
Present.
Councilor Grady Sextier. Councilor Horn.
Here.
Councilor Cage.
Excuse, I believe he'll be here later.
Councilor Kretovic.
Here.
Councilor Kurtz.
Here.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor McNamara.
Here.
Councilor Schlosser.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Seku.
Yeah.
And Councilor Todd.
Here.
Very well. As this is a continued meeting, we're going to start where we left off at eleven P. M. on November tenth, and that is the reports section of our agenda. We'll be going forward from there. City manager, we had a report in progress on Memorial Field. Yes, I'd ask Mr. Gill and his team to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. I know it was late at eleven o'clock, so with talking to the city manager, we talked about maybe starting about halfway from the report. If you guys want to do something quicker and ask questions, I got Chris and Eric back, the consultants, asking any questions on pricing and phasing and stuff, so it's whatever you would like me to do, we're here.
Why don't you go through the end of the report to refresh everybody's memory? Subcommittee work?
This is a two-year process, kind of came together in the final steps this June, two thousand and twenty five, when the city council and the school board got together and created a subcommittee to look at the Memorial Field projects. This challenge, make sure the master plan addresses all the site drainage, make sure the field locations in the right location, make sure the track improves the ability of host meats, increase parking, drainage, and most importantly, can the new master plan be built in phases due to the price tag? Over the seven meetings they had, some of the highlights, they did expand the parking, onsite parking by one hundred and eighty onsite parking spaces and improved site circulation. They did move the track, the new athletic field to the lower corner of the complex. That's a southwest corner by the Trinity High School, if you're looking at the complex. There's a grass athletic field in between the track and the multi-sport stadium. Kind of moves the stadium to the western side of the complex. That's mostly because the stands are facing west, which would be all the P. A. system, the music, so it would migrate into other areas of the community as it does now when we have large events. It does move the two softball fields to the current location of the track. Baseball field is rebuilt to show the correct field orientation. My meeting with the high school and middle school students, they did request some team rooms to change into, so it does include a field house with four team rooms, public bathrooms, concessions. It does include the new maintenance building for staff and equipment, and then a separate new concession area with bathroom building down by the main complex. The subcommittee also made a recommendation as part of their meetings to look at the state land to the west of the park. That's the cornfields, about the possibility of purchasing that in the future to add additional parking as the site still has, still needs additional parking long term. Turn it over to Chris? Eric, whoever?
I'm happy to go through. Chris Huntress with Huntress Sports Landscape Architects and Planters, specializing in athletics and recreation, and we've been fortunate enough to work with the project team for the last two years. The layout that you see in front of you now is the recommended plan that's come out of the subcommittee. I think we went through it last time. I don't want to take up more time than is necessary, but I know there were some questions about cost. I know there's some questions about field orientation, as there were at the last school committee meeting that we were at as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the committee if that's the appropriate time to open it up.
We have our attention.
Eric Girard, I'm a civil engineer with V. H. B.
Your pen?
So looking at the phasing, it's similar phasing. We're looking at the blue as phase one, which would include the new track and kind of working on a clockwise direction. The other two lower fields with the grass field in between, and that's going to allow some construction staging, which is brought up by the subcommittee, would be beneficial, allowing those fields to come up and grade for the elevations to support the drainage improvements out there, and then working further clockwise with the softball fields and also the parking. Parking would go with the first field to make sure all that access and additional parking was provided when that new field is opened. And then pushing into phase two, it could probably be broken into further phases, but getting the baseball field reoriented, and then the buildings with the concessions, the field house, and then looking at the tennis and basketball courts, if they needed to get resurfaced at a later date following those, it could be done at that time, depending on the life expectancy of when that phase is going to go.
This is the updated cost estimates for Concept D. Final design and permitting, that would be the next phase if city council and the school board wanted to move together in some fashion. That's a one point two million dollar for final design and permitting. That process is about a twelve-month process whenever we get funding to start. And then recommended phasing, it's broken down into, you know, phase one, A, one B. It just gives us options to continue the conversation and move things around as budget allows. But all in, right now, the projected construction cost is just shy of thirty-two million dollars.
Let me speak to that briefly.
So it was my office that prepared the construction cost estimate based on the phasing and the preferred master plan. When we approach a project like this, we prepare our cost estimates using actual numbers from public projects that we put out to bid. We do this, we've been doing this for over twenty-six years now. We have a healthy backlog of both public and private work that we can draw from. Every time we put a project out to bid, we put unit prices in the bids so that we can get, it kind of helps us fine tune our numbers as we move forward with other projects. So we have the benefit of all that as we put your cost estimates together. Some of the unknowns, this is a master plan, it's not construction documents, so we haven't done final grading, earthwork, but we've made some assumptions and we understand where we are going to have to fill and where we are going to have to cut and what we're going to have to do for drainage. So we have some real good understanding as to where we are. I do feel that the number is appropriate, given the scale and the scope of the work, but I also feel that it's conservative that we've built in enough contingency and enough additional funds that we should be able to work with this number without coming back and having to ask for more at a later time. So I'm happy to go into detail on any of the numbers, if anybody's got them, or how we arrived at the numbers that we did.
Yes. I'm just curious about the process. When you started this, was there a budget when you started, or was this kind of a, let's do everything that everyone wants, and then we'll try to work the numbers?
Yeah, the great question. The concept was to create a master plan with the community based on community input. We had two public meetings. We had separate meetings with the middle school and the high school students to fine tune everybody's wants and desires. There was no preconceived budget before or right now. It was making sure everything there is what we needed for the operation and also what everybody asked for.
Is your presentation completed?
Just the next steps. If it's, it's, last Monday, I did present the same, all three of us were there for the school board, city and government subcommittee. They looked at it, they did make a recommendation for the full school board to accept the Master Plan D as presented, as well as they recommended the school district fund a portion of the master planning and permitting phase. So, it's the next steps, if you guys are okay.
Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you. I just had a question going back to the cost estimates in the phasing. You've got prices in here for phase two, two A, two B, two C. What are those based on? Is that some sort of expectation as to years out, or how'd you do that sort of estimate?
We broke it down from a constructibility standpoint first and foremost. If we knew that we needed to touch the track and move that first to the back of the park, if you will, which is kind of the southwest corner of the park, that that would impact other areas, being the multipurpose fields, and give us the opportunity to build some of the drainage that's needed in the lower portions of the site as we kind of work our way, way up. All the costs that you see are projected out twelve months from now. They're not, we haven't escalated beyond, you know, a twelve-month window. So phase two cost would be behind that, but we tried to look at it from a constructibility standpoint again. If we start with the track, what else makes sense to work on, which would be the multipurpose fields, softball fields, and then move into the bulk of the improvements who have moved into phase two.
Thank you. Counsel Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may sound familiar because we were discussing this when we wrapped up. Thank you, by the way, for addressing that who had input to get it to this place. I find that helpful. But to get back to my question you were answering, and I really appreciated what you shared about how the travel team and change in youth sports has morphed into that sort of system. You were answering my question when we ended, and I really appreciated what you were saying. So I don't know if you want to pick up where you left off or summarize it for the folks who are new here today. I don't know.
If I could, I would. I can't remember where I left off.
I don't either, really.
Sounds very authoritative.
Very understandable.
And just for everybody who is home, we do have on our website, we have all the concrete TV videos, all the presentations, all the history of Memorial Field, all the deeds and everything, so it's there. So people can research it also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been some questions about utilization of the different fields, who uses the fields, and I know there's quite a bit out there underutilized or not being utilized at all because of the current conditions. In future reports, can you just add an addendum about utilization of what we do have out there and functionality of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We see that request a couple of times.
Just want to make sure we all know.
Yes, that is coming.
Counsel Brown.
Yes, I just have two questions. One, an architecture student, Drew McGee, had his masters. He's played at these fields, did a work of Memorial Field. Did you have an opportunity to see his work?
I do not remember seeing any email from him. I got the email from you a year or so ago, but I did not get any, I don't remember seeing any.
Would you be interested in incorporating some of his ideas? Sorry, that was a follow-up.
At this point, this is a final project. We don't have additional funds in the budget to tweak it unless.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be interesting to see, but I don't know how much we'd like to see it.
All right, my second question. Yes, so on October twenty-third, the middle, the school board approved a hundred and sixty-eight point seven-seven million middle school. Does any of that, a hundred and sixty-eight point seven-seven million, is that including any of this, or is this on top of the hundred and sixty-eight point seven-seven million middle school?
This project is addition to.
Additional?
Yep, it's a separate park, it's nothing to do with the school district.
So it would be two hundred and ninety-nine point eight-nine million, just clarifying. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Mr. Gill and team, so when we look at the phase one, phase two, how tethered are the elements of phase one to each other? In other words, is this got to do it all at once, or is this, we could do phase one, get the track and field, bleachers, drainage lights, parking done, and then move on at a future time to another phase?
Why don't I start, and then you can jump in? Between phases one and phases two, there's a lot of scope here. It could certainly be broken down further if you wanted to. It was some desire in the public hearing process that we had to, that it was more desirable to do this in a shorter timeframe, so we tried to put it into two phases with obviously the As, Bs, and Cs. If your choice was to break this out and do it over a longer period of time, we can phase it that way again. I can't emphasize enough, we're a master plan level, and we haven't gone beyond it. So one of our next steps is to begin the design, including grading, drainage utilities, and it's at that time, it would be easier for us to better understand how we might break these phases out, where we might stop one phase from a construct, again, it's all about constructibility from a construction standpoint, where does it make sense to stop one phase and move into the next?
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Gill, I understood from you that the entire school board has not seen this.
No, it's my understanding that they're going to see that at December third meeting.
Okay.
That was their recommend, the subcommittee's recommendation was to present it at the December third.
To date, only a subcommittee has seen it?
Yes.
Okay.
There was five members there, but the full board has not seen it yet.
Thank you. I would prefer to come back and look at this after the school board has had a run at it. I'll entertain a motion to table this until our December tenth, I think, meeting?
Moved it to. So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, counsel Todd.
Sorry, just add just one quick additional comment based on your comment, Your Honor, which was, just for clarification, if we're looking at just phase one, not one A, one B, the track, field, bleachers, drainage, lights, parking, was what your comment earlier, did that suggest that within that phase, in fact, we could even break that out further? Is that, that's what you were suggesting? So in other words, obviously, you would want to do the track and field and drainage at the same time, but in terms of the lights and the parking, could that be an additional phase that could be broken out of phase one?
Yes, it could be. Once you move the track, yeah, I'm just looking to see if there's dominos that we're touching in any area. I think you're reasonably good. Once we do move the track, we are going to impact baseball, though, and baseball would have to come offline if we went with the configuration and Concept D.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Mr. City Manager.
So, David, so you go back to the school board, you go to the school board, get a agreement, so to speak, on what they believe the concept should be to meet their needs, come back to the city council the following week, essentially, or close to it. At that point, we've always tried to stretch the taxpayer dollar as best we can. So if the council was able to come, school board and the council was able to come to a decision on a concept, would you have the ability to apply for any grants or anything out there potentially?
The December city council meeting would probably be the latest to make that decision. Earlier this year, you did give me permission to apply for a lot of water conservation grant fund. It was for five hundred thousand dollars. We did the initial review. We have been asked to submit a full.
Remember signing that in.
Grant request that's due January third, so.
Follow up? So would that, would you apply those, if we were successful with the member signing the app to the request? If we were successful with that, would we be able to apply those dollars to the design or construction?
That was for construction.
For construction, okay.
And then, in this year's budget, FY twenty-six budget, you have a project approved with fund, but the funds were not approved. So it was one of those asterisk projects, and that was for seven hundred and fifty thousand of city money to be matched by seven hundred and fifty thousand of other money, because a year ago, the thought was it was going to cost us one point five million to get design and permitting, and it came down a little bit.
Thank you.
And those funds have not been appropriated.
That's right.
Counsel Schlosser.
So what is the action that being requested of city council? We heard this, and even if we come back December tenth, what action will be asked of us?
We'd be selecting a version of this plan to move forward with.
And would that require, may I, and would that require an appropriation or a vote on a budget item?
It would require an appropriation for the design phase, correct?
So what you do is if you could agree on a concept that corresponds with the concept agreed by the Concord School District, then you, both groups would have to set down appropriations, a public hearing and an appropriation for those dollars. I don't believe the Concord School District has appropriated any dollars, but who knows? And the city has certainly not. So you would, if, once the Concord School District appropriated whatever the appropriate share that you both agree on is, it would come back to the city council, because the city owns the property. City council will then have a public hearing and appropriate the matching funds, whatever the match is you want to go with that. Then they could proceed with design.
Thanks for that clarification. Follow up?
So for further clarification, so if we, would we set a public hearing on December tenth or for a following?
It's actually December eighth. I was wrong.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
December eighth, would we set a public hearing to follow in January or sometime, or would that happen in December, the public hearing?
No, no, a public hearing wouldn't take place in December.
No, it would have to, it would.
Go ahead.
If the, the public hearing would take place a month after you set it down, assuming that you agree on what the concept is, you agree with the price is, and you agree on what the share is. So if all those three things come together, you could set down, set it down for public hearing and then take.
At a, at a, at thirty days' hours.
School board would have to do the same thing.
Counsel Cage.
Thank you, Your Honor. So that brings me to a tricky question, but in terms of the buy-in by the school district, in terms of their commitment, which has been verbal so far about half of the cost, at what point are they locked in to committing to this project? I mean, if we're appropriating money, I would want to know that they too were committed in the same way.
So I've talked to our finance deputy city manager and Mr. Gill. I would recommend a memorandum of understanding or an agreement in place that, because, because it's city property, the city, it would make sense for the city to do the bond, not only because it's our property, but also we have, we get a better rate than the school district does, and that they have, we have an agreement that you agree on with the school district that says they will pay, let's say it's a ten-year bond, that they would pay their share as we make payments. So you both wouldn't go out and float a bond for half. We would float the bond, they would agree to make those payments to the city. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, just for ease for the community, can we put a link to that directly on our homepage rather than the long email address or web link address that's up there? It'll be easier if it's just a hot link.
Sure. Take care of it tomorrow.
Easy. We'll do it. Counsel Schultz.
I'm wondering if we could also add to the discussion the possibility of selling the city's share to the school district? I realize that may be controversial, but I'm probably not the only person who's thought of it, at least in passing.
The share of.
Our part of the Memorial Field to sell it completely to the school district, especially since the city is split between two separate school districts.
City manager.
We've, not only have we done that in the past, but we've offered to give it to them.
I guess I'm saying this time, is that a part of our, I guess it's really for the mayor.
Okay.
Is this, can we make it a part of the discussion for this proposal, around this proposal?
Counsel, when we come back in December, we can discuss whatever you want.
Okay.
But I do believe we're the full owner of Memorial Field.
Complete owner.
Yes. Am I correct, City Manager?
You're correct.
Thank you. Counsel Foot.
Thank you, Your Honor. When we come back in December, would it be possible to pull out the parking as its own phase? I think that would be helpful as far as, so folks can understand what that portion of that eight point two million dollars is. And also, I did receive some emails relative to the existing baseball field, lights and bleachers. So are those bleachers compromised as much as the stadium football is?
Yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
And I heard.
Footings have heaved on your, follow up on your baseball.
Thank you. And then, relative to that field, you said that if the, if the multipurpose field is constructed, then they would have to take the baseball field offline?
Under this present Concept D, the footprint of the track and field would lay over a portion of the right field of baseball.
Is it possible to shorten the field temporarily so we can have a Fenway-type atmosphere for a few years until we come up with a money?
Green monster? Certainly, I'll look at it, sure. I can tell you exactly how short left field or right field becomes.
That would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you. Can you repeat what you said about the deficiencies of the bleachers? You said footers, something else, and you turned your head, and I did not hear you. I apologize.
Sorry about that. The footings on your baseball bleacher have heaved, and what that does is it creates instability within the structure of your baseball grandstand, and also can impact handicapped accessibility and ADA access into that.
Thank you.
Great. We're ready for the question. The motion is to table this to our December eighth meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Gill.
Always a pleasure.
And also all the work of the ad hoc subcommittee that worked on this.
This brings us to unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to remove item six from the table.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it. Just for the clarification of the public, I'll just state that at our November tenth meeting, our city council agendas are in two parts, in dealing with items that we need to vote on. There is a public hearing portion during which we have public hearings on all of those items on the agenda, and then there is a public hearing action phase during which we discuss and we take votes on the items that have had a public hearing. This item was placed on the table after a motion to approve was made and seconded and during the discussion of the item. The motion was made to table this until today's meeting. So we are essentially picking up the meeting at that point. We've already completed the public hearing portion. There's a motion on the table to approve this item, and we are now in the discussion phase. Counsel Kurtz.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to continue the discussion of the proposed project and discuss reducing the cost, the overall cost by approximately five million dollars without incurring any delay or redesign. Know if that's a possibility.
Mr. City Manager, is that a possibility?
The, the, what we can do is working with our, our folks, our contractors, and go back and do some more quality, quality review engineering on this and try to come up with a different number that works underneath that. As you know, we had put forward a, as part of the original presentation, I think there was one point four million dollars that could be reduced, and then however the prices came in appropriately, those pieces would be added back in. So we would essentially do the same thing with a reduction of, to the number, appropriate number that you come up with to that point. If it gets too far, then I think you'd be better served going back and doing a redesign. But I think if you were to get in the, somewhere around that range, maybe slightly less than five million, that may be something you could do.
Counsel Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. How could we proceed this evening in identifying a feasible number under or below the forty-five-five that would not incur delay or compromise any of the essential elements of the project that the team has presented to us?
Well, one approach, you could, let me go back through my notes here. If you start as a basis that you wanted to do the proposal that, uh, I made regarding funding, cause, cause ultimately you're trying to reduce costs, but ultimately it's reducing the annual tax rate impact on, on folks.
Correct, I'd love to do both.
Do both, okay. So, um, if you were to go back to the, uh, approach that I suggested and go with a, uh, three-bond approach, three, um, over, uh, over the years. And also use the community, uh, improvement fund reserve and the use of fund balance, uh, on a step, on a, um, on an annual basis. You could then, then take the additional one point four million dollars on top of that. Cause you haven't, you haven't really discussed that even though, even though it's on the front of you. And you would have to go, uh, say you could go another, um, three million, uh, I'm gonna pick a number, three million dollars and try to, um, work that. Remember, the numbers that you have in front of you are, are cost estimates that we've received from, uh, our construction management folks that we're working with. These are not bid prices that, um, we went out and got. This is our construction manager working with those. And given the number, if we could, if we have a project, a real project and a real dollar amount to work with, I'm confident working, the, the work we've done with Milestone in the past, very much like when we did Main Street or the community center or, uh, you know, the, uh, skate house, uh, park, um, we, we could, we could maneuver it in such a way where we could get to those numbers.
Wonderful.
So that's, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident we could do that. Can't guarantee it, but I'm pretty confident we could do it. Now, obviously, if you don't have to go that far deep, then it, uh, it, it, uh, it's much more, uh, greater chance of success, but we'll do our best and I, I'm, I haven't let you down in the past, so.
Thank you.
Counsel.
So to that end, might I offer a friendly amendment? Or would might, an amendment which may or may not be received as friendly?
I don't think there's a motion, is there?
We have a motion on the table to accept the.
Now, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion on the table to approve.
So is that the correct order of operations?
You may, you may make a friendly amendment.
I'd like to amend the proposed appropriation to forty-one million dollars.
Sorry, Counsel, Counsel Grady Sexton made the amendment.
Oh.
I'm gonna ask her if friendly amendment is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Could you repeat that? I don't know what just happened.
I made the, um, underlying motion. And so the mayor had asked whether or not I am amenable to a friendly motion.
Okay, didn't hear any of that.
Sorry.
So my proposed amendment is that we reduce the appropriation, um, by roughly four million dollars. One point four plus the three, four and a half million dollars to an appropriation of forty-one million dollars, which would allow the project to proceed as designed on the timeline proposed with no construction delays.
Is there a second?
And we've, uh, to add on that, we have the same footage.
Counselor, Counselor.
Sorry.
Out of order. Hang on. The motion has been moved in seconded, we now have discussion. Counsel Foot.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Are you suggesting, I'm looking at the value engineering alter, add alternate items, so that's the one point four-three.
That's the one point four, so we, those would be known.
Monies, I think what you're saying is there's also a three point three million dollar contingency fund. So essentially, if we incorporate the value engineering and utilize and reduce the, uh, contingency to zero, that would put us where you are suggesting?
May I respond to that?
Uh, you, I, I, I think that the answer is that the city manager would work within the number that we give him.
Right. Oh, could I redirect towards the city manager?
That's fair.
He's re, he's redirecting. So, could I?
You may.
So, uh, I, I'm gonna work from the bottom line and not worry about whether it's a contingency or an HVAC or in parking, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. Counselor Schultz and then Counsel Second.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Counselor Kurtz, um, with this amount specifically, it sounds like you are amenable to that. Can you explain why that is better than even a bigger reduction? Why wouldn't it also make sense, for example, to postpone it for another year to come up with even more significant cost reductions? Why, why force it to keep to a schedule like that when we possibly could find more suggestions?
Counsel may answer.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the question, Counselor Schultz. I feel compelled by the urgency of the need, given the current state of the department, the profound deficiencies, the health and safety risks to, um, both sworn and unworn, uh, sta- civilian staff in the facility. And I feel concerned that delay for, um, potential cost savings is not, um, significant enough to justify the risk of increased inflation. I spent the last two weeks asking a lot of questions, looking closely at plans, really pushing on the staff to whom I'm deeply grateful for answering every single question and crunching every single number, because it was my desire to, um, save as much as possible. This number is not arbitrary. This number comes from pushing as hard as I believe I could to a space where staff say they feel comfortable, we can proceed with the project with the urgency I believe is necessary, and reduce the overall appropriation.
Counsel Second.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I just want to also say what you just said on the motion. Is it the same footprint, right? With a reduction of the cost by four point five million with the same footprint, is that correct?
May I answer that?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's actually, it's the forty-one million. So it's a reduction of.
Four point five.
Three point five.
No, four point five.
Four point five, I'm sorry, four point five, thank you.
But yes, without a change to the designs as they've been proposed, so no change to the footprint of the building, the cost savings would be found through value engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
That's all the discussion? He, he just asked if there was any other discussion.
Yeah, I asked if anyone.
So this is the discussion before the vote on this motion?
No, this is the discussion before the vote on the amendment.
Thank you.
So all those, I believe the ayes have it. Alright, oh, I'm sorry, all opposed, no?
Didn't actually vote. I didn't say anything.
We didn't finish the vote.
Alright, let's re-vote, I'm sorry, please, yeah. Alright. Take a deep breath. Alright, all those in favor of the motion, which is to, uh, which is to change the, uh, not to exceed number to forty-one million, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Yeah, the ayes have it. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Counsel Schultz.
I respect everything that Counselor Kurtz, uh, did to work on this. I feel pretty blindsided by this number in particular. It would have been more helpful for the public to also have been involved in this discussion. I assumed if we were doing any new amount, that that would be proposed today. This is echoing how it was for the budget discussion not that long ago, where we're yet again deferring to staff to just make magic happen. I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't feel that this is something that we need to force on a timeline. I, I do believe the majority of this community, me included, wants to have a better police station. I had the opportunity to finally tour it. I could give you the list of things I noticed. Anyone who's done that tour can walk away and those that trust us, which I do believe is most of the community also, most everyone, certainly almost everyone I've spoken with, understands that this is a need. What I don't feel comfortable with is a drop in price from of four and a half million, I believe? If I'm getting the math correct.
Four and five, yeah. Four and a half, yeah.
Uh, feels, uh, I know you just explained it, but it feels pulled out of a hat at the last second and in a process that didn't involve the council. I think it's not enough. I want to support this. I, I suspect you probably already have the votes. I respect that too. It's gonna be what it is, but I do know that everyone that I've heard from in my ward, without exception, has a serious concern at the price tag. Whether it's fair to us as a city council to hear this or not, it is true that the taxpayers get the full tax bill. And as a renter, I feel it in my rent raises that have been significant in the last three years in particular. That, um, look at that price tag, comparing it to whether it's, again, whether it's fair or not to the middle school. Having the memorial field planned right on the heels of this discussion does not help. There's also a very good plan at the county level, uh, for a much-needed expansion of our nursing home. None of this is fun or easy. If it was, we wouldn't be dealing with it here. I could give a much bigger, and I'm sure you would agree with many of the points that I could say about how difficult it is for the average person in Concord right now. I do not feel comfortable with this number. It does not help me feel better in, in casting a vote of yes. I want to be a yes, but that is not enough of a drop in price for me. I think you can say, and it has definitely been said to me, if you wait too long, it could cost more. We won't be in the same system if you gotta, wanna put it on, on the line for January. I don't feel the pressure of that because I feel the pressure of all the conversations I've had with constituents from Ward Nine who are struggling, that that bill for them is really hitting hard. And it continues to hit harder each and every year. I am not a person who's against government spending at all. I will keep saying that and every time we have these votes. What, but we're not addressing the needs of our citizens in a way that makes this comfortable for me. I want to be a yes. I would like to put a pen in it and talk about it after having more conversations to make this and other things cheaper, to find other ways to find savings in our community, to do better economic development plans, to look at ways to shift the burdens to those who can most afford it, which would be the wealthy. Those things aren't happening to a degree yet that I feel comfortable. So I wouldn't be representing Ward Nine to support this plan as discussed. I do respect the work that has happened, but, and in two weeks, it is impressive, but I don't feel that that's enough.
Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you. I wanna start by thanking Counselor Kurtz for the amendment and all the hard work that I think she's put in over the last two weeks. I have, you know, since this first came up, really struggled with the price tag on it. Certainly, everybody I talked to recognizes that the current facility we have is inadequate. It doesn't serve the needs of our community, certainly not our police force. It is probably a detriment to our ability to recruit, uh, young men and women to our force. I have, you know, struggled, cause it's a big price tag. And, you know, the building is not quite what we were told it was going to be when, um, we were originally presented with the, um, due diligence and made the decision to purchase it. Uh, however, while I would like the price to be, uh, smaller than it is, at this point, I think that, um, the plan is, you know, the best plan we can get for the best price that we can get at this point in time to get what we need. So I'm gonna be supporting it.
Counsel Second.
Thank you, your honor, and I want to take this opportunity to thank many counselors that work day and night to make this possible. Like Nate said, many of us think that the price tag is not a price tag. There is a lot of work that has been done from touring the building to seeing what is the plan, to talking to staff, and I cannot stress it enough, based on our meetings with the staff, the work that has been put in in this. So this is not just one day people waking up and saying, I want to reduce it by four point five million. It's a question since we delayed it to the two weeks, uh, we've been having. And I said it to many of you guys, that I will not support a forty-five point five million building. And we went back and forth and as Nate said, this was not an easy work and it was work that we can all today say that forty-five, getting the same amount of score footage, same quality, same work to forty-one million. If, as the city manager stated, that's possible, I'd be supporting that forty-one million. But I want to see also the finance and the tax increase on how that would work based on all the plan, um, for the bonds that we discussed. So I think it's very important, this work to be stressed enough and the due diligence that many counselors put in this to make it clear and firm that we want to support a forty-five point five million. Thank you.
Counselor. Counsel Credit.
Thank you. Counselor Seiko, I appreciate very much you not getting in touch with me. Counselor Fantasy, I appreciate very much you not getting in touch with me. Counselor Kurtz, I appreciate very much you not getting in touch with me. Counselor Schultz, Counsel Foot, Counsel Todd. The majority of the council here never reached out to me with regards to this project. Over the past year, Concord has spoken often about diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and belonging. But somehow we wanna leave that as an acronym at the city and not actually put anything into action. I listened to our police department talk about the inequities of gender inequity for our women police officers, our women administrative staff, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, who have to walk by those people that victimize them in our current police station. There's no place for trauma-informed care for individuals in our community. What we're left with is an employee base that doesn't have equity on a project that we've been discussing for over twenty years. This is not two weeks of working on this project. This was posted in October. And there was plenty of time for the, um, community to look at this as it's been on the website. It's been discussed in multiple committees. It has not been something that just appeared two weeks ago. And originally, we were told it was a fifty-two million dollar project that was reduced down to forty-five point five. And graciously, Counselor Schultz has found, or Counselor, excuse me, boy, I did the same thing, Counsel Kurtz.
See how easy it is?
No. In, in speaking with our city staff and bringing up the concerns of our commi- our community, have found a way to at least reduce a budget item to forty-one point five million. Did I get that right, or forty-one?
Forty-one.
Okay. Um, our city manager oversees over five hundred employees. And it is a responsibility of this city council to direct our city manager, and we work in partnership with our city staff, to come up with a way that is, anything that is a budgetary item is, um, something that can be digestible by our community. The financial present, uh, pressure that our city residents are feeling, that is real. And that is something that has to be respected. But trying to separate out what is the city council's responsibility and the school district's responsibility, I would gladly point out that the state is cutting school funding. And the state has pushed down retirement plan, uh, expenses to us for over a decade now that has resulted in couple million dollars a year in extra expenses to the taxpayer. So the real problem here doesn't fall at the foot of the city council or at the foot of the school board. It falls at the foot of the state. We're barking at the wrong house. It's across the street and it really starts there. Our state legislature, they're the ones that are in charge of whether or not those people that make more money pay more money in their property taxes. It is not this house. It's another house. Um, supporting the new police station, to me, it's a contradiction when we talk about fiscal responsibility because the fiscal responsibility is actually moving the project forward. The longer we wait, the more it costs. You know, this search for perfection or a perfect funding cycle, it's never going to come. It has never come. We will always find a way why we can't support this fiscally. But what it does do is it affirms our belief in our community, our greater community, as well as our staff community, that we deserve equity for our staff. They deserve it. I think our female police officers, our female staff in that building deserve something better. And I don't wanna just focus on the gender inequality because our mechanics are working in a strained environment. Our administrative staff, our, um, parking enforcement officers, our regular officers are working in constrained, um, in a constrained building with a lot of limitations and are just simply not operating as a modern police, um, of modern police force should. Those are the type of processes and infrastructure that we need to just support the community now. Not only the community that we have. the community that we have in our growing future. Those are the type of things, a new middle school, that attract businesses, which is the tax base that we are all hoping to expand every single time we sit at this table. So process doesn't come and progress doesn't come by stopping. It comes by moving forward. And sometimes leaders do have to make really difficult decisions. I trust that our city administration are gonna try and fine-tooth this, this budget as to the best of their ability, but they can't start until we actually support their efforts moving forward. And so I'm going to support Counselor Kurtz's amendment. Thank you.
Brett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have similar thoughts as Counsel Kretovic. First off, I want to acknowledge uh, city staff for all their hard work on countable hours, although they did count them for us and it's a big number, um, especially Ms. Fenstermacher.
Twelve thousand.
What's that? Twelve thousand three hundred. Twelve thousand three hundred, thank you.
Fourteen thousand four hundred.
Okay, it's going up, it's going up by the moment, so let's keep it rolling. Um, thank you though. I, uh, last month, Counselor Schultz, um, uh, asked that a report by the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute be distributed to councilors. And um, it's titled affordability eroded, changes to the cost of living in New Hampshire. And it concluded that rising costs leave a typical New Hampshire family with seventeen thousand dollars less disposable income per year than ten years ago. Um, and the report, and there's a subsequent Concord Monitor editorial that seems to state that the main issue relates really to wage earners, that wages have not kept pace with rising costs over the years. Um, now, no New, no Concord and I would say no municipality can uh, make the cost of uh, living more affordable for wage earners or those on um, fixed incomes. Uh, we certainly can't force employers to pay their employees more. And so um, what happens is that um, uh, taxes are collected on the back end and um, while those do help, uh, we, we do see some benefits from those, uh, those dollars are not, are filtered and so they're not directly distributed as wages. So I know I'm not the only councillor that's heard, as we heard already tonight, from uh, the public, members of the public who have real concerns about the cost of living, especially when we look um, at taking on large projects like the police station. Um, but uh, the reality is that the Concord City Council and the city are really in the same circumstances as residents. In that we're uh, faced with limitations on income versus uncontrollable rising costs. Um, many of us are looking to additional revenues from task-based, tax-based expansion as a way to help Concord become more affordable to residents. And making that focus on commercial development and taking some of the weight off of residents. Um, and I think we need sources of revenue just as the individual who rents, uh, who needs a, a larger increase in their social security benefits or in their wages, or they're looking forward to getting a bonus uh, relies on those dollars to help keep up with rising costs. Uh, I think we um, need to continue to focus on uh, discussing all these limitations uh, while also listening to folks about what services they want to keep or what services they might want to jettison going forward. Um, because um, you know, the city can't control rising prices, but we can reduce spending by reducing nonessential services, just like in a household. You can make those individual choices. Uh, so I'm hoping residents will get involved and have robust discussions about this during the master plan process coming up. Now, for the police station, despite the financial implications, I think it would be a disservice to the public uh, and to the community to vote against it, uh, this project at this time. And I'm gonna talk specifically about folks in Pennacoke because they have asked for more patrols, for example, to catch speeders on local roads. It's a quality of life issue. And New Hampshire is one of six states that does not allow ticketing by electronic enforcement. So when we talk, as Counsel Kretovic mentioned, about um, getting some help from some other entities like the state or federal government, that's another example of where we're not getting any help. And I don't see that that change in that is on the horizon at the state level. So we are forced therefore with having to hire more police officers, spending more of your tax dollars on police, specifically because the only way that police can do what folks in my community want them to do, go out and catch speeders, they have to witness the violation. And then they can, they can enforce it. Um, so um, I think, you know, therefore, you know, we really, we, we have no choice but to have the additional officers to keep up with the demands. So we can't really expect the police department with uh, the limitations on the current building. Um, and the examples that we heard about the lack of safety for staff in the current building, to expect them to continue functioning uh, with the current building. So build it for less, that's, that's been a topic of conversation, certainly. And then my question is always, well, how much less? What, what would you be comfortable with? And um, it's very hard for folks to come up with a number on that. What would be acceptable to the public? My guess is we could really never reach that number. Uh, and still build a facility that would meet the basic needs of the police department to properly execute their functions. So in other words, this is not like uh, when we're looking at the golf course building and a reduction in size there, because there we're talking about uh, reducing uh, rooms, let's say, where you would have the potential for additional revenue. Or we're not gonna do a full restaurant. Okay, so you, you've eliminated that, that potential for that revenue that you would get from that lease arrangement. But with the police station, it means eliminating the potential for the police to be able to adequately perform their duties and provide safety for our, to our community. So I've always voted on projects with safety in mind. And I'm really don't feel prepared to start, stop that now. Um, it's also evident that delaying this project will lead to greater costs. Um, it seems that um, what we've heard at least is an estimate of a three percent cost increase per month. That's significant dollars when you're talking about a forty-plus million dollar uh, project. Um, so any savings that we might get from any limited scope of changing the project later on could easily be lost in the cost increases that we would see. Um, so, uh, you know, I have also heard some comments from folks, well, you know, will building a new police station in and of itself make crime rates go down? Uh, I would say likely no, there's no magic here. Um, and that in and of itself will not have that effect, but it will provide the police with the tools to perform their jobs to best meet the needs and expectations of the community. And as for costs, I would hope that the Tax Exemption Policy Committee, but it meets early next year, will take a hard look at the percentages of discounts for those on fixed incomes and to devise a plan to provide some extra relief in coming years for those most greatly in need. And if that takes more than one meeting and some additional time and some study and some real research, I would hope that that committee really does that work to try to address the concerns that we've heard from residents. That speaks, I think, to Counselor Schultz's comment, Schultz's comment earlier about, is there a way that we can more equally spread this burden to those who can't afford to pay? Um, so, you know, I would, one final comment to those who feel that uh, dollars should not be spent on police or a new station, but rather on other methods of solving our societal problems. I'd note that we're already moving in that direction, for example, with our hiring of the social workers. But to make a sudden shift away from our current methods of enforcement without first studying the ramifications and then any unintended consequences uh, that uh, might come about would, I think, be irresponsible. Uh, I know that, for example, uh, comparison, some bicycling enthusiasts who might like to close Main Street to避堵 traffic, but again, uh, you wouldn't want to do that tomorrow. You'd want to study those changes and make sure that you could do it in a, in a cautious and progressive way. Uh, so for these reasons, I'm gonna be supporting the uh, the amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McNamara.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I too want to say, give my gratitude to the staff. They always, they always do a really great job, but they have gone over and beyond with the extra time and the thoughtful questions and the thoughtful responses. So thank you to the city who's done that. Um, to piggyback on what was just said, we've heard a lot from the community that we don't need this much space. It's not going to, how is it gonna help the police do their job better? Well, I was worried tonight that we were gonna come here and we were gonna be asked, um, we have to reduce space. And what would you get rid of? Are you gonna get rid of uh, the ability to interview victims, have a room where their child can be safely watched with a two-way mirror? Are you going to get rid of a second floor bathroom where people need a bathroom? So I'm not gonna go on and belabor this, but it's not just that there's too much space. If we think about what did happen in Manchester, I don't know, twenty twelve? Uh, when they did reduce this footprint, Manchester's having some trouble right now with their space, their evidence room. And I know that in Concord, that's our biggest problem right now. Um, unfortunately, the Reed homicidal evidence, that's housed in the basement, in this storage room, that we know there's a spring running under there. When it rains, what happens to that room? So that evidence is up on pallets along with other evidence um, from the fire that happened across from, I think, the police station years ago. So we already have a problem. And when people say, you don't need that space, yes, we do. Look at the space we had that was, was appropriate when we built this, and now we're out of space. So I think it's more than just it's too much space. What are you gonna do with it? It's not about just the building. Again, it's about what we do in that building that supports our community and in turn supports the emotional, physical well-being of the people that are in charge of our community's safety. So I too will be supporting this and I'm very pleased that we're not discussing cutting any services that we currently have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you to all the councilors that have been very spontaneous with your comments. I've written my comments down because I didn't want to miss anything, so I'm, I'm gonna read them if I may. But I have been and I remain fully supportive of the new police headquarters. Uh, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that such a facility is needed. Has been re, has been reported, uh, as, as, as has been reportedly demonstrated to this council, the current building is inadequate, unsafe, and long overdue for replacement. The need for the new police uh, station is clear. I have listened closely to Jackson's raise. And while the financial commitment is substantial, I am not persuaded that we should halt the delay of this project. The cost of not building is ultimately greater than the cost of building. I am fully aware of the significant challenges Concord faces uh, years ahead in terms of the city and school side of the ledger. And that's a problem and that's something we need to address. But proposing, postponing this decision is in effect canceling it. Delaying action is simply kicking the can down the road and, and doing so simply will increase the cost eventually to the taxpayers. A decision of this magnitude should, is difficult, but that does not mean it is not necessary. So in listening to those who talk about scaling back, I will go back to Counsel McNamara's uh, point, and I've talked to people in Manchester as well, and that police department is only twelve years old and they're already talking about scale that is insufficient and space is a problem. So I think now is the time to act on this and delaying it will just cost more money. It's painful, it's expensive, but it's necessary.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Schlosser, then Counsel Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank you, Counselor Kirch and the city manager for working to propose to reduce the expense of this by about approximately ten percent. Um, I too have written my comments.
No. You're better than I am.
While we've heard much testimony from resident city employees and police experts, I believe it is important that the people of Concord hear from their elected city council representatives directly as we are doing tonight. And they need to hear our best estimate, assessment of the case for spending forty-one million dollars for this building. We must make this decision based upon the best assessment of what is in the best interest of the community as a whole. And with other councilors, I want to acknowledge the upfront, the increasing pressure of property taxes are having on Concord residents. They most powerfully impacts residents on fixed incomes and low-income residents, whether property owners or renters. This is a very important consideration in this decision. The police, this police station decision is one of the most difficult of my two-year tenure as a city councillor. I've received numerous communications from residents, both opposing and supporting the new station. If we build a station today, it must last for twenty to fifty years. I've invested uh, considerable time in researching what twenty to fifty years the future of policing might bring us. I've researched the probable future of policing to assess whether future, key future trends align with the design and the costs we've been presented with. I researched the aging of the New Hampshire population, electrification of cars and transport, the spread of artificial intelligence, and climate change. New Hampshire has the second oldest median age in the nation and is continuing to age rapidly. In the future, there will be fewer working-age adults. Crime patterns will shift and ADA and accessibility will become more central. Recruitment and retention pressures will increase. Employee training and wellness beco- will become ever more important. Noncriminal welfare calls will increase, necessitating, necessitating more social workspace. The exact timing of electrification of cars and transport is difficult to predict, but planning for recharging electrical capacity is important. The danger of battery fires with impounded vehicles will require special fire suppression capabilities. The expansion of artificial intelligence is already upon us. This impacts the police station design in at least two ways. The need for increased fraud and cybercrime capabilities and a need for a dramatic increase in computer server storage. Finally, climate change is already causing an increase in extreme weather events. Our police department is the first line for evacuations, traffic safety, emergencies, and emergency management support requiring increased resilience, backup power, hardened infrastructure and communications. I've repeatedly questioned city staff and the designers on these issues. Here's what I've learned. Some have questioned the proposed size of the building. But eight, more than eighty-seven percent of the proposed space is for immediate current need. Residents may not appreciate how undersized the current police station is. The overwhelming majority of space is for immediate current needs. Thirteen percent is for future growth. For a building expected to last twenty to fifty years, that is within the recommended ten to fifteen percent growth capacity. And much of the space in the renovated building is designed for walls to be easily reconfigured to flexibly meet changing future needs. For example, increased social work staff or need for more computer servers. The proposed training space includes needed functionality, including virtual reality training, to ensure that our officers have the knowledge and the skills to best protect our residents. And we anticipate cost savings from conducting trainings on-site. Design includes electrical conduits for future electric police vehicles when it is feasible for their deployment and will include specialized fire suppression capability for potential EV car fires. This is a smart design decision. The proposed design meets category four ballistic requirements. Regrettably, the increase in assaults on safety officers around the country makes this an important requirement and will meet national police standard certification requirements. The hardened infrastructure will ensure that when, not if, an emergency occurs, flood, tornado, or whatever, the police department will be able to continue to support our community's critical emergency management efforts. I've questioned whether there might be ways to cut one thousand, five thousand, or ten thousand square feet and reap the attendance savings of an average of six hundred and forty-seven dollars per square foot. The answer is it is not feasible and it will not save us much money. The six hundred and forty-seven dollars per square foot is an average. And the first fifty percent, foundation, infrastructure, et cetera, is more expensive than the last fifty percent. So cutting space now will save us less per square foot. And because the vast majority of space is configured for immediate current needs and the design team has worked diligently with police staff to create an efficient, functional space, cutting square footage now will require a complete redesign, increasing costs, and substantially delaying the project. An important way to understand this is a piece of critical infrastructure for our community. As a homeowner, if my furnace went out or my roof sprung a leak, I would have to find the money to replace them. This is the decision before us. As elected community leaders, we will have to make the decision that best serves the community, all of the community, both now and in the future. Critical public safety infrastructure cannot be delayed. People may know of my efforts and commitments to address homelessness in our community. We must and can do better on this. The press has extensively described the delays in adding urgently needed housing in our city. These are missed opportunities to increase our tax base. We must and can do better on this regard. I serve, and I acknowledge Counselor Todd's uh, suggestion, I serve on the Tax Exemptions Policy Committee. And as we've done in the past two years, I will support additional property tax exemptions or credits for elderly, low-income, disabled, and veteran residents. I'm honored to have been elected, re-elected to serve another two years to representing Ward Seven. I commit to working on these issues, especially homelessness, and expanding the tax base with housing in my coming term. Tonight, because I think this investment in critical public safety, safety infrastructure with this design at this cost to the taxpayers with this design at this cost to the taxpayers is on balance in the best interests of our community as a whole, I will vote to support the building, the proposed new police station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Seckler.
Well, it's hard to go after you because you write a big book that I said that's not easy to handle. But what I do want to say is um, I want to answer Jennifer for the Councilor. Sorry if I didn't reach out to you personally about this specific issue.
I'm not angered at all.
Okay, many of us that had issues with 45 million, we said we are not going to support 45 million and let have a conversation and discuss this in a deeper, compassionate way that we know this will help reduce the price. And during all this conversation, we realized that the police department is a must. And touring the police department, I came to the conclusion that the police department is needed and I will support a police department. Now, the question is what, for what, how much? So with multiple meetings with city staff and city councilors, we said, okay, how much money do you think you will support? And we went back and forth to realize and many of you guys here that we have been talking about this price tag. And during this campaign, I heard it loud and clear from Ward Eight Council, uh, resident saying that we cannot afford any tax increase. We do support a police department. Now what and how much that will be? So I get to work and working hard with many of you and working with the city staff. I cannot thank them enough. Beth, thank you. And you made it easier for many of the conversations that we had and the city manager. I do want to say a price tag of 45 was not something that I personally would support. But based on what I saw and what have been done by um city staff and for what today of the 45 million that we are willing to, I'm willing to support, I want to share a few things, the why behind this decision. Because I think that every project deserves scrutiny and every saving is a saving. We can save 45 million, 10 million, 3 million. For me, every saving is a saving. And I came to a conclusion to say that if we can save 4.5 million, 10% as Counselor stated now, there's no reason for me to not give the police department what they deserve and what will help them do their job. We discussed about retention. And we all know a beautiful building doesn't make retention. It's great to have a beautiful building. What is retention and how can we help? With retention is really trying to build a strong culture. And today I will say that all the ride along I did, the meetings I had with police department, I always felt that they have a strong culture that support the city of Concord. As an immigrant and as today, an elected official, before I was elected, the deputy uh chief who retired today, Thomas, said to me one time, Ali, I always loved the meetings that I had with the community, teaching them about the police and what police do and to make them feel comfortable about police department. And that stuck to me until now. And now with this new design and new space, hopefully we'll get back to the training. We'll get back to the conversation with the community and we'll get back to what they always have done, supporting all Concord residents and doing the job that we all seen and witnessed what they always have done. So this conversation was never taken lightly and will not ever be lightly when it comes to a project and a city project. And this is why I got into work with this to make sure that the reduction happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your thoughtful remarks and all of your hard work over the last few weeks on this issue. First, I'd like to recognize Ms. Fenstermarker for her and her whole team for the tremendous work that has gone into this project. As you heard earlier, more than 12,300 staff hours as of last week went into this project. And it's been a highly professional, data-driven and collaborative effort with numerous opportunities for public input. I also want to thank the city manager for coming up with numerous additional cost savings uh for our taxpayers, including the new cost savings we're hearing about this evening. And I want to state that this was not at all a difficult yes vote for me because the proposed police station project is not extravagant, it's not oversized and it's not optional. It's simply the actual cost of construction, constructing a modern, safe, code-compliant public safety facility in 2025. We only need to look at Merrimack County's proposed $50 million renovation to our county nursing home. These are just the real numbers of construction today. Concord is not exempt from market forces or inflation. We are simply late to the game on this project and frankly, should have moved it forward 20 years ago. We also can't ignore the operation, operational or legal realities inside the current police station. As Counselor Kretovic stated earlier, but I feel it should be stated again, the current building does not meet basic standards for female employees. Women are changing into their work clothing in hallways and they are without a private lactation room. Juveniles who are engaged with the justice system cannot be kept fully out of sight and sound of the public as required by federal and state law. And the public and children are forced to share space with dangerous, high-risk sexual offenders who are present in the building each week to compete, complete their legally required registration requirements. During the public hearing, we also heard from civilian employees that they are forced to work dangerously close to high-risk offenders because there's not adequate space to separate detained individuals from civilian workspaces. These are not hypothetical risks, they are the daily conditions that our city staff and public are subjected to. And we've been put on notice that it's only a matter of time before these deficiencies cause real harm and real legal exposure for Concord's taxpayers. Failing to act, in my opinion, is not responsible government. Some have suggested delaying or scaling down this project, but this design is already delayed by two decades. It is the scaled-down version. This is the functional footprint for a 21st century police department. Every square foot is tied to an operational need, national standards or safety requirements with a very limited amount of space for growth. As Counselor McNamara stated earlier, if somebody wants to delay this vote or reduce space, they ought to state what they would postpone or eliminate. Should we cut storage space for rape kits, DNA evidence and forensic storage? Should we remove private meeting rooms for victims or for juveniles? Should we reduce a shower for officers who come off hazardous scenes that impact their health? Should we eliminate a maintenance bay for our police fleet, forcing these expensive vehicles outdoors, which will in turn reduce the lifespan of the vehicle by up to 10 years? How is that a cost savings for taxpayers? It simply is not. As we've heard, Manchester's Alderman tried reducing their project to meet an arbitrary number because of political pressure. A decade later, their evidence is piled in hallways due to lack of space. Costs didn't go down, they went up because they're already in need of an upgrade. A reduction at this stage or a delay is not a savings. It triggers millions in redesign costs, millions more in escalation and years of delay. No vote tonight or a vote to delay this project doesn't save our taxpayers any money. It costs them more and increases fiscal, legal and operational risk. Meanwhile, our first responders continue working in a cramped, unsafe, demoralizing condition. And we wonder why we have issues with recruitment and retention. The building is not just old, it is failing them. Ignoring these conditions for political reasons is not fiscally responsible. It's playing politics with public safety. To me, tonight is about whether we protect the people who protect our community and whether we take responsibility or pass it along to the next city council or ultimately to Concord taxpayers. Again, we've been warned about the risks. We know the deficiencies, we know the legal exposure. The choice before us, to me, is simple. You can vote yes to invest in a facility that protects the community or accept mounting costs, dangers and liabilities of doing nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Horne.
I support our police and all of the, their support staff. I voted yes on all the police contracts. I voted yes on retention bonuses last year. I also believe they need a new police station. But this $41 million version of it is not what the community wants at this moment. I'm not going to repeat what I said two weeks ago, but I will reiterate that my main concern here is spending beyond our means. Our tax rates just came out last week and our value for commercial and industrial properties had a .23 negative growth. We cannot just keep spending money and expect the homeowners and renters to shoulder the cost. Taxpayers were just handed a 5.1% property tax increase in Concord. All at the same time, social security cost of living has only gone up by 2.8%. EverSource just announced a rate increase of 13% this winter. And all sources point to health insurance costs rising anywhere from 7 to 25% in the coming months. We also have no idea how this reevaluation is going to affect many, but we can be pretty confident that it's not going to be good for the lower valued properties. My ward is one of the more economically disadvantaged wards and it's my job to stand up for them. They've spoken loud and clear, they cannot afford this path we're on. We need to prioritize bringing businesses here and raising revenue in other ways before we continue spending. At the business I manage, I provide my board with financials every month. I create future outlooks of our funds and I provide recommendations on what capital improvement projects we have that we can possibly complete, but we also put money into savings for larger projects. And there's many times I have to tell them that we need to cut off our spending until we can build up our reserves again. This is the exact strategy I would love to see the city follow and because of that, I cannot support this.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'd like to thank, add my thanks to Beth Fenstermarker, her team, who put more than 12,000 hours on this project, who met with our police officers, who met with the experts and the architects we brought in on this project. Also want to thank the city manager for his nimbleness in trying to find financial solutions for us, uh, including, uh, you know, his concept of three bond issues, uh, you know, tapping our community improvement reserve and our undesignated fund balance in order to soften the impact uh, of the initial years of the bond issuances uh, on our taxpayers. Most of what I was going to say has been said extremely eloquently by other members around this table. But I will say that I was thinking about this project Friday when um I had to call in a bomb threat. And our police department, the men and women who we're talking about taking care of right now, rather than running away from a bomb threat, went to that area, made sure that the public was safe, put their own lives on the line in order to protect the public. These are the people that we need to take care of, just as much as we had to worry about P-Pass free equipment for our firefighters. We really need to think about a safe and productive work environment for our officers. It's already been stated that this space is going to be, I think, 85% occupied around that, just by current, just because of the current needs we have. The two large, fastest-growing areas that are going to be populated by that space are investigations and our cybercrime units. Cybercrime, 20 years ago, that was not a problem, that was not a thing. At the same time, our police are receiving one to two complaints about fraud every day. That's a new burgeoning area in crime. And the criminals who are engaged in this are not the guy down the street or down in Manchester or in Nashua. They're cyber criminals who are offshore, who are victimizing our elderly. Our elderly were taken to the bank for $2 million this year. One elderly woman was convinced to sell her house. She's homeless because of this crime. We need to give our police officers the equipment and the space they need to expand their law enforcement in just that one area as it becomes an epidemic. I take very, very, very seriously the impact on taxpayers. I've thought very, very hard about this, as has, I think, everyone around this table. There was a very eloquent article or my turn piece in The Monitor this morning by Drew Beamer, which pointed out that part of economic growth and economic development is a safe community. People do not invest in communities that they not, do not perceive as being safe. We have one of the safest communities in the country and in order to keep it that way, we have to ensure that we have the officers to be able to chase, to be able to uh, give that speeding ticket. Uh, we have to have the officers who can educate our senior citizens about avoiding being victimized. We have to have the officers who can be contributed to regional drug task forces. We have to have a decent place for our female officers and our male officers to change into their uniforms, to put on their equipment, to go out the door, to face a dangerous world for us. So for that reason, I'm very proud of this, of this council and all the work and all the thought that you've done and put into this. And I'm very proudly going to be voting in favor of this motion. All those in favor of the motion as, as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Ayes have it, the resolution passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. That, thank you very much. That brings us to... Oh, two-minute break. I've been requested to have a two-minute break. Will be recessed for two minutes. All right, we'll come back to order. All right, this brings us to item twenty-seven, consideration of item pull from the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, so this item is a report from the Rules Committee recommending the adoption of a financial interest disclosure form. It was pulled from consent by Councillors Kretovic and Brown.
All right, Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Rules Committee has been meeting for several years now in order to get some clarity around our rules, the ethics ordinance, et cetera. And of course, the council here has seen multiple reports come through. This is the latest, we've really worked on this for about four years, identifying different forms that are used in other communities as well as the state of New Hampshire. And ultimately, this decision for putting this form out here, I think the emphasis here is it's a voluntary disclosure. And above all, it doesn't take place or take precedent over sitting at a meeting and being able to say that you have a conflict of interest, you should still do this. But it's really elevating the transparency in the community so that others can know what conflicts you might have. There are some other rule changes that we're going to be presenting to the city council in December that we hope you'll support. Ultimately, what we're looking for here is to have some consistency with our boards and committees so that they know what a conflict of interest is and when they might need to disclose that they have a conflict of interest. And working with our city solicitor or acting city solicitor, John Conforti, at the beginning of the year, he is going to lead discussion with our planning board, our zoning board, the Conservation Commission, the Heritage Commission, which are all quasi-judicial boards that operate under legislation by the state of New Hampshire, as well as any other committees that are interested in hearing about conflict of interest and how it works and whether they might be needing to disclose something on this form. So it's really for awareness of the community, elevating our transparency and for members of the council to know and understand it is voluntary and it does not remove your responsibility to declare when you have a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yes, I think the fact that this is a voluntary form shows that it's not really being consistent. I think if we want to be consistent, then we should say that especially city councillors should have to do a mandatory disclosure form. Everyone knows that I'm married to a police officer and I recuse myself, but not everybody knows all the conflicts of interest around the table. So making a form simply voluntary has no teeth and people may think that it is, it's just, it's not consistent. It's not achieving, I think, the goals you want. And I think we should know what a conflict of interest is. And I actually have a question for the city solicitor about what constitutes a conflict of interest, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it a conflict of interest if a councillor's family member receives a discount or their employer receives a discount at, say, our golf course? Is that, is that, this is just an example, is that a conflict of interest?
So Counselor Brown, respectfully, I think, with respect to the council, and I know that you just went through this training with Attorney Passick, the council is self-governing with regard to the ethics rules and conflicts of interest. Conflicts of interest are delineated in the Code of Ethics and then there ultimately there's a process for the council to determine that. So respectfully, it's not my position to rule or govern on a particular conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Conforti.
Clarification?
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
So, so does that mean that if a member does, chooses not to disclose their conflict, then it's not a conflict? You should file a complaint.
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. I just had two questions, I don't know if they're best for Counselor Kretovic or not. The first one was to go to the question of why the committee chose to make this a voluntary versus a mandatory form.
It was the consensus of the committee that a voluntary form would be offering a start in the right direction for giving transparency to the community. The actual vote for not having it voluntary failed.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Follow-up.
So then I had a question regarding, under business relationships, it mentions agent or consultant. What was the committee's thought with respect to what that means? To kind of frame it a little bit, as someone who's an attorney, obviously I have clients. And so I'm wondering if the expectation was that someone who was in a legal capacity or in some other capacity would be expected to identify clients as part of this form?
That's a great question. It's my understanding there are two consultants at the table that also have contracts or they are agents for certain entities. And it would be the responsibility of that individual to disclose when they have a conflict of interest. But there are also superseding documents of non-disclosure and confidentiality agreements that you would have with your agent or whoever you are consulting. And those take precedent over the council rules here because of the legality of them. So the purpose of not being, being able to not have to disclose who your client is is why that language was put in.
If I could, this is more of a comment. I appreciate that because I, I do know there are, I haven't had a particular situation, but I could foresee a situation where perhaps I have a representation, I need to recuse myself, but I have obligations under the ethical rules not to disclose clients. So thank you for that clarification.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to move, a motion to approve the report.
Out of order, Counselor. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all right. Is there further discussion? Counselor Horn.
Once we fill these out, where do they, where are they stored? Who can access them?
They would be with the city clerk.
Response, yeah. Counselor Schlosser.
So thank you for this work. And could, I might offer a suggestion that the Rules Committee, well, how would we know if this is helping? That's, that's my underlying question. And might we ask the Rules Committee to report back in a year or at some period that's appropriate to just report on the summary of how is it going? Is it helping our interest to promote transparency? And does it need to be amended in some way? Is it fine as it's currently written or would we change it in some way? I don't know if that would, the Rules Committee would be willing to take that on as a, an assignment or a request from city council to sort of assess how it's going after a year or so and then report back to us in summary fashion of what, what your assessment is about the benefit respect to the intention of transparency.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely a great idea. We do have other work that we are still doing. And I think that it's a conversation beyond the city council, that it does include the zoning board, the planning board, Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission. So getting all of that feedback and their voluntary forms, if they're participating, is the first step.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table this. I think it is, does, it's not expansive enough. And I think there are, I have some deep misgivings that people are voluntarily recusing themselves when they should. This, this has no teeth, it's, it's voluntary, it's for a select few committees. We have other committees that deal with a lot of contracts, that deal with a lot of recommendations. And I think this doesn't go far enough. So I think it needs to table it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Motion is to table this item. I'm sorry, Counselor Schultz.
Thank you. I'll just say in brief that I feel strengthening ethics in our council is a great thing. And I appreciate what Counselor Kretovic and the members of the Rules Committee have done. I do think that making it mandatory would be preferable.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Seku.
Thank you. And I and Counselor talked about this because I think it's very important when we say direct or indirect to clarify that nobody on this council should be told when and how to direct and to, to see where the conflict is. And I do support what you just said. This should be mandatory for all. Were we reading this form to be completed by certain elected officer? I think it should say certain, it should say by elected officials and, officials and officers. Could that make it whoever sign it is held accountable to what they think? Responsibility is, some, somebody doesn't have to dictate to us what responsibility is. Every one of us should recognize what our responsibility is, what our ethics is, but also knowing that when you forget as human, when you are reminded, you can act on that faithfully. Because I think it's very important that the rule apply to everybody, not to few.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? The motion is to table this item. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you. Every person at this table and every person that serves on a committee that is appointed by the mayor or the city manager with the approval of this council takes an oath of office. And that oath of office states that they are going to follow the rules and the laws of the Constitution of the United States, the rules in the Constitution of the state of New Hampshire, and the rules in the ordinance set, set forth by the city of Concord. So we already do that. And we are already doing this on a good faith effort that we will declare ourselves when we have a conflict of interest, that we would do so. And the process is if somebody does have a conflict of interest or somebody suspects that there was a conflict of interest, they file a complaint. This is only about transparency. And I believe the, the question about should this be voluntary or should this be mandatory? The state does make it mandatory for their elected officials. Oh, it isn't, it's voluntary?
No, it's, yes, on the filing of the annual report, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right.
So we're going to hold ourselves a higher standard than the state of New Hampshire?
Let's not have a debate.
I, I agree. So I think that the, the other clarifying point here was that there's always concerns at the table that every single one of us have a conflict of interest at one time or another. This is about the public being able to see what your conflicts are.
Counselor Kurtz, did you have a?
Yes, I, I had a question, which is what would be the purpose of tabling? What would we do if we were to table this tonight?
It would sit in unfinished business until somebody took it off.
Right, so I guess maybe it's a question for Counselor Brown, if I'm allowed to ask?
Sure, go ahead.
Counselor Brown, if we were to table it tonight, what would you intend to do while it was tabled?
Um, I, I think there should be great, there should be more conversation. I think there's, I think it should be mandatory. I think we should hold ourselves to a high, higher standard. And I think that we should be transparent to, and it should be something that everybody knows what the councillor's conflicts are. So, yeah.
Counselor Horn.
May I ask, Counselor Brown?
Sure.
Are you meaning to send it back to the Rules Committee to adjust it then?
I would say it could go back to the Rules Committee for teeth, to make it stronger and mandatory.
What's the motion? The motion is to, out of order, the motion is to table, the motion is to table. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor of the motion, which is to table? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. The motion now before us is the motion to approve. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. The motion passes. That brings us to consideration of suspense item. I'll undertake.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Suspend the rules to what?
Counselor, it's to suspend the rules to take up the item on the agenda.
Okay, that wasn't, that wasn't said? Doesn't that need to be said?
All right. Mr. City Manager?
Your Honor, members of the council, so there is a request to set an appropriation of three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars down for December eighth, twenty-twenty-five public hearing. We recommend that you set it down.
All right.
I don't think we really took a vote.
I'll make a motion to set suspense item one down for a hearing on December eighth.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, ayes have it. That brings us to comments. Counselor Schultz.
Oh, I didn't get to make the announcement to invite everyone to the listening session with state reps that already happened. I do want to thank the mayor and Counselor Horn for being there. And we will be having more of those in council. I would also just like to say, when someone is suspending the rules, you should say what rule that is that is suspending. Even if it's written down on an agenda, the people at home may not see that. So I don't think we handled that the way we should have, or whatever that's worth.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you bear with me, I have three announcements. There's a lot going on in Pennacook lately, so.
There's always a lot going on in Pennacook.
Correct, thank you. The Pennacook Village Association is going to hold its annual meeting on Monday, December one, at six-thirty PM at the Pennacook Elementary School Library, which is sixty Village Street. And this is your first opportunity to provide input on, your input, on Pennacook's future, its businesses, and the direction Pennacook should take to make it the community you'd like to see in the future. And so all of them from the public is invited to this free event. The guest speaker is going to lead the discussion, is going to be John Crist. He is UNH's Extensions Community and Economic Development Field Specialist in Merrimack County. The Pennacook Village Association has begun work with UNH Extension and their Community Business Engagement Program. The end product will be UNH creating a project report with actionable items. And those are going to identify business opportunities and obstacles, along with assistance on carrying out future actions. And so this effort, we hope, is going to provide valuable information during the creation of the Concord's, of Concord's new city master plan. Second, the Pennacook Village Association is celebrating its twentieth, time flies, Pennacook Tree Lighting on Wednesday, December third, at Boudreaux Square on Village Street. Attendees can assemble around five-thirty PM for the free event to hear carols and singing. We will have the Pennacook Elementary School Chorus there again and Blanchard Family Singers. So enjoy some treats and watch Santa arrive, courtesy of the Concord Fire Department. And the tree will light up at six PM. That's, of course, if we've all been good. Third item, the Pennacook Village Association will be holding, hosting a community meeting for the Pennacook Representatives of the Merrimack Valley School Board and its finance officer on Tuesday, December ninth, six-thirty PM, Pennacook Elementary School, this time in the cafeteria. Come and hear a preview presentation regarding next year's proposed Merrimack Valley budget and warrant articles and provide input and feedback, ask questions of your representatives. I will be at all three and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, so just for my colleagues, as we think about all these massive projects that we are facing, we have a revaluation and other municipalities have said that it is incredibly hard on mobile homeowners and condo owners. Mobile homeowners have seen their tax bill in other municipalities ride triple. So I looked in my ward and a double-wide home, mobile home, is paying twenty-eight-hundred dollars right now. If that triples, well, it's likely to triple, next fall, at this tax rate, twenty-nine dollars and eleven cents, they will be paying eighty-six-hundred, eight-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-one dollars. That is an increase in, for a homeowner of a double-wide mobile home of five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. And that is before any of these projects. Their tax bill will increase six-thousand dollars with the addition of the police station, add another thirty for the golf clubhouse. So this is the reality. We have a thousand and thirty-three mobile homeowners in Concord. And we can expect that their tax bill will triple. their tax bill will triple next fall. So we need to be thinking about how we're going to mitigate that. That's all I have.
Consulor, Consul Kretovic, and then Consul, Consul McNamara.
Thank you, Your Honor and members of the council. I can't express enough my deepest gratitude to our community. After our last council meeting, I had a communication from Friends of Forgotten Children that the need for Thanksgiving food baskets and turkeys this year was going to far exceed what they had ever had in the past. And before I went on town, out of town on business, I had put out a post on Facebook. Other colleagues here at the table shared that. They got 500 turkeys. 500 turkeys. 500 families are having a Thanksgiving meal this coming Thursday, thanks to our community and what we did at this table. I only know what we shared because I follow all of you, but I know that members of your network shared and others shared and others shared. This project for helping Friends of Forgotten Children started over 20 years ago. My husband works at Ozrim Silvania and they give out turkeys to their employees and he put out a list and said, hey, if you're not going to do your turkey, will you donate it to Friends of Forgotten Children here in Concord because it supports the county of Merrimack? So you don't have to live in Concord to have their support. It supports our friends in Bosquin and Webster and all the way out to Hennecar. This Hillsborough Business, knowing that their employees live in Merrimack County and a good portion of them live here in Concord, they donated their turkeys. This year, they did 25 with us being out of town. But that 25 multiplied in this community to 500. I'm stunned and I'm so proud of everything that this community did to support our neighbors in need. Thank you.
Consul McNamara.
Cool, thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to share that Kimball Jenkins will be hosting their first annual holiday and estate event, November 29th through December 19th. Being that it's their first, they need a lot of volunteers. Volunteer might be two hours as a greeter outside, inside, setting up beverages. If you'd like to volunteer, just go to the Kimball Jenkins website, it should be on there.
Thanks.
See anybody? Consul Seku.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you to the people that organized the parade on Saturday. It was a lot of fun and I think with the cold weather, the city of Concord residents came out massively and supported. This was my first time to walk on a parade in this weather and I had a lot of fun. So thank you to everybody that attended as well.
Thank you, Consulor. Well, up, cut the foot.
I want to echo what Consul Seku said, that was, that was a fun day to be out with a few of you and, and I think I heard that the parade was actually for Consulor Brown's whose birthday it was, but that could be just hearsay. So tonight, we heard a lot, we had two major projects that were discussed, Memorial Field and the police station, and thankfully, the police station will move forward. It'll be completed with the $41 million by.
On time, under budget.
The city manager. Kind of, where I'm going with this is for two years, I've been trying to get the city to reevaluate its impact fees and the suspension of them for the last 12 years. So some of the, some of the burden that we're seeing now, I believe, is a result of us, not us, but past councils, not collecting impact fees for roads, utilities, recreation, schools. And this is, has put us in a real predicament, but I think from the discussion we had, I think there might, may be some momentum to reinstitute some of the fees that have been suspended so we can lessen the burden on the tax, the existing taxpayer and have those that want to come and develop in this city contribute adequately. So I think that's, I think that's good for, for everybody in the city. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. So enjoy the weekend.
Thank you. Thank you. Consul Seku, Consul Foote took some of my thunder. I wanted to thank Brian Blackton and the Concord Grange for putting on a great parade last, on Saturday. It was cold and it was overcast, but you know, it's, it was amazing when Consulor Foote and I were walking back to our cars and going, you know, in the opposite direction of the parade, Consul Foote kept saying, it's still going, is it? I didn't realize it was so large and it's really because of Brian and the Grange who put this on every year. It was a great event. I also want to highly recommend the Pennecook Tree Lighting. I think I've made it every year since I was elected to City Council and it's, it's a great event. Just a, and the Blanchard Family Singers are, are well worth it, well worth, and the kids from the school. I also want to remind the council that the Capital Region Food Program, I believe, will be coming next month, as they usually do, to do a presentation. And you know, at, at that time, they, they will happily accept food or monetary donations. So Capital Region Food Program was created by Mark Manis, who owned a clothing store on Main Street, and his tradition was picked up by his daughter, Maria Manis-Pensho, and now the chairman of the board is Elena Eloise, Elena Pensho-Eloise, so the third generation. So I just remind the council of that. They'll be dropping by, as they usually do, to kick off their, their holiday season food program. So that, having said, having said that, Mayor Protam Seku moves that we adjourn. Consul Todd, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Enjoy the rest of your week.